But that notwithstanding, there are still the, what I think are overwhelming concerns with the effect that this would have on the neighborhood and in effect, the city at large. Even in the picture that the applicant just showed, I can already see a wave developing in that surface of the artificial turf. I noticed that when I was there at the property. So like Commissioner Brody pointed out, it all looks great when it's, you know, day two of installation. We're worried about year two, year four, year seven, and beyond. And I just am really worried about the effect that it would have on the city as a whole. So with that, I will request a motion.
I move to deny conditionally used permit number CUP 20-10 at 1448 Bradbury Road.
Second.
Okay, we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
No.
Was that a no?
No.
Okay, understood. Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boyle?
Yes.
Chair Dustin?
Yes. And so at this time, I'd like to sort of revisit the thoughts that we had about a motion to make a recommendation to City Council is now an appropriate time?
Yeah.
Director Cervantes?
Sure, if you'd like.
Howard, do you want to take a stab at it?
Sure, sure. I would make a motion to request that the council consider enacting an ordinance prohibiting artificial ground covers and artificial turf. Simple as that.
Could I make a friendly amendment to that? I would like to sort of incorporate Vice Chair Boyle's suggestion of a sort of wider consideration of environmental concerns that maybe we ask City Council to consider changing ordinance to accommodate current environmental factors in dealing with landscape issues. And then maybe we could ask, I don't know, Director Cervantes, let me know if this is the right road to go down, but could we ask the commissioners to send you suggestions on topics that maybe could be put on a list of things to consider? I'm thinking things like hardscape percentages in the backyard. A favorite of mine is, you know, dark skies compliant exterior lighting. And again, you know, not any kind of a directive, but just a suggested list of things to consider for City Council.
The problem I foresee is the more you put on the council's plate.
Yeah.
My dealings with councils have been along these same lines. The more they throw up their hands and nothing gets done.
What if we make a motion?
The more focused it is, the more likely they are to deal with it.
What is, what about the possibility of making a motion to have the City Council consider, and I don't know the proper verbiage, and Director Cervantes, you can help with that, but, you know, a motion that encourages them to look at an entire climate action plan because that will take into consideration heat island effects, it will take into consideration drought, drought tolerant landscaping, impervious structure, the, you know, the preservation of our shade canopy, going as forward as, like, you know, that we could have charging stations throughout the city, you know, for our electric cars, that we could maybe even consider not having black asphalt, but look for things that don't create such surface heat. Like, I would really like us to go really bold and make a motion for the City Council to make a priority that we have a subcommittee of a climate action group to really consider some more ordinances as it pertains to that.
I have an idea. Why don't we have the motion that I suggested, and we vote on it, and then we have your motion, and we'll vote on it. I could tell you, I'd be in favor of it. And at least we don't put it all on one plate where they throw up their hands.
That sounds reasonable to me. How does everyone feel?
Chair, if I might?
Yes.
I like Vice Chair Boyle's idea about a subcommittee because I think that responds to Commissioner Brody's, I think, very good point, that if there's too much on their plate, they're going to throw up their hands. But if you give them that, that idea of do a subcommittee and give them a deadline for the committee, or else they just, of course, go on forever, to get back to council with actual recommendations related to this broader topic, then you may, I think you do have a better opportunity of something being passed.
Well, what I would recommend is, is go ahead and provide me with direction on this specific topic that we just discussed, and we can then get into the more global climate environmental motion thereafter.
Commissioner Brody, can I ask you to restate your original motion one more time?
I never wrote it down, so this is from an old man's memory, so here it goes. A motion for the City Council to consider a, an ordinance prohibiting artificial ground cover and artificial turf.
Do we have a second?
Can you repeat the motion again?
Oh my God, you're really doing it to me. All right, so we're asking the City Council to do nothing more than to consider employing a, an ordinance or enacting an ordinance prohibiting artificial ground cover and artificial turf.
I will second that.
May we have a roll call? Or do we need a roll call?
No, I think I, we don't need a roll call for that. It's not a deciding action at the moment, but I get that it's a majority that would like that to occur.
And now, do we make another motion for the City Council to consider a committee to investigate a climate action plan?
Do it.
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
Okay, I make a motion for, now I feel like I'm just going to repeat myself, but I would like to make a motion to request that the City Council consider creating a committee that will investigate and investigate a climate action plan for the city of San Marino. That was a terrible motion, but.
I'll second it. I know what you mean.
Thank you.
And all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The only, the only thing I will add to that respect is, we did, and I don't want to go too much into this because now we're likely dealing with the brownneck issue, but the council did, under their priority initiatives prior to the adoption of the budget, did discuss a climate action plan. And it wasn't one of those items that went through, and so it doesn't really affect your motion today. Of course, it does start the conversation again, which is fine, but I do at least want to let the planning commission know that we did go down that path, and there was no support for that at that point, but certainly we can, we can look at the conversation again. So I just wanted to conclude with that. And so I will discuss this internally, of course, and see what we can do, and we'll move on from that.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. So with that, I'm going to move us to the next agenda item. This is consideration of design review, DRC 19-88 HP at 1450 Rubio Drive. And could we have the staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair Dustin. This is a project requesting for the construction of a single-story home with a basement and a detached two-car garage tucked in in the backyard of the home. The proposed home is compatible with the legal neighborhood in that the new house will easily blend in or integrate with the existing street scape, particularly with the north portion of Rubio Drive, which comprises of medium pitch, single-story home with minimal ornamentation. The overall design program as viewed from the street is similar to the existing home in terms of visual massing, building height, front and side yard setbacks. I would like to note that the proposed home is actually three inches lower than the existing home, so that makes it a little tricky for the commissioner to really see the boat of the home from the front, from the street view. The home will be constructed on a slab without a raised foundation, so that's how, and in conjunction with the slope of the home, that's how they're able to achieve a new home actually with a lower height. Step is able to support this project as proposed and is seeking your approval tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Eva. Are there any questions for staff at this time from any of the commissioners?
I have a question.
Yes, please.
I just want to clarify something, and I wrote this down, and frankly, I could be wrong, but I wrote down that on page 271, there was a note that said two protected trees were going to be removed, but then in your report, and on page 279, it says no protected trees are planned for removal. So I just want to clarify it, that there's no trees planned for removal?
That is the case. The architect and the landscape architect are both on the meeting at this time, and he can certainly confirm that for the record.
Thank you.
Any other questions from any of the other commissioners? All right, so given that, I would like to then ask if the applicant is present, and if they could please state their name and address, and give us their presentation, please.
Yes, we are present.
Yeah, yes. I'm the architect and owner also here as well. As Eva mentioned it, our landscape architect is also here, too. So can I have a share screen? Okay, can you see the screen?
Yes.
Okay, so my name is Feng Xiao. I'm the principal of architectural firm FXA located 2540 Huntington Drive, suite number 207, San Marino, California 91108. We are the architect applicant for the project. Again, thanks for the staff who have been working with us, the owner, along the way to make this project work, and it is a great opportunity for us to present here. So basically, as Eva mentioned it, you know, when we actually, let me talk a little bit bigger pictures. When we started, we did look at the neighborhood, you know, style, and we did look at it from neighborhood scale. So around this neighborhood, there are multiple architectural styles here. Minimal traditional is one of the predominant architectural style here. So we actually decided to design this house as a minimal traditional style, and from the neighborhood scale, massing scale to architectural detail, we're trying to do as authentic as possible. So I do, I do want to spend one minute just talk about the massing and scale. The original house, existing house, are very similar massing with the new proposed house. And as Eva mentioned it, you know, there are some non-conforming conditions for existing home, left and right, the setback here. So therefore, after we made the new proposed house designed to conform all the setback requirement, the current house is actually narrower, and, you know, with the new construction type and slope here, so the actual new house, massing, the height actually three inches lower than the existing home. That's why the pole is like that. I just want to clarify that. And then the house itself is actually pretty straightforward a house. We did look at the scale, the around neighborhood, there are one and two-story home, but immediate neighborhood, and mostly one-story home. That's how we chose the one-story home here. And then the site plan is very straightforward. We're trying to keep the minimal traditional style, keep the driveway still on the left, and then the landscape, front yard, and then on the back, there is a detached garage. And then, other than the backup area for the garage, and most of the area are well landscaped. And then on the boundary, we do have a hedges along the property line to protect the privacy. And then if you enter from the front yard, a small porch here, there is ceiling alcove lighting here. There is no wall-mounted lighting at the front elevation. And then you enter the foyer, and then the left is all mostly more public, public zone, I would say, the living, open floor plan for family and kitchen. And then the right-hand side is all bedrooms. So and then when you come out from family room, this is a bigger opening and door. We're trying to connect it with outdoor small courtyard here as a play area. All the existing tree has been kept. That's the case. I do confirm that. If you have more questions about landscape design, our landscape architects are also here. And then the fence is all wrought iron fence here. So this is basically front elevation with, you know, some landscape element here. Like I said, we're trying to keep the elevation and the detail as clean as possible. This is overlay from the existing home to the current home. So it is at a front elevation. We're trying to confirm all the setbacks. It is narrower than before. What else? The elevation, front and side elevation, back inside, there are some wall-mounted light here, dark side, dark sky wall-mounted light on the backyard and side yard, building section, there are small basement under the family room. This is all the detail of the roof and overhang, and then the window detail and perspective, you know, staking plunges to verify the height and everything, you know, the top of the highest point of roofs are right here. You won't see it from the story pole because it's lower than the existing. The material boards and all the materials from roof tile materials to the window is all from San Marino architectural approved architectural materialist. The roof tile is a simulated wood shake roof. We see their light, hundred silver wood, and the window is the aluminum cladding window from Anderson East Series. I do want to mention there is a small typo on the material board and the material, the elevation, she's all correct. It should be satellite, this is the correct one, satellite 600 silver wood. And then the stucco finish with sun-finished stucco. I think that's pretty much what I have here. And again, owner is here, you know, they want to say some words in here, and I'm here to answer any question you may have.
Thank you. Did the homeowner want to say a few things briefly?
Yeah, sure. Good evening, everybody. Heidi and I, our names Heidi and Derek Lu, we're the owners of 1450 Rubio Drive. We want to start off by thanking our architect, Ms. Feng, the city staff, Ms. Eva Choi, and also all the commissioners and directors on the board. Just thank you for your time. I know it's a hard time, especially with investing in this project and evaluating this project during COVID-19. It means everything to us. A little bit about her background, my wife and I grew up in San Marino, and our parents still actually reside in the city. We currently have two children, five years old and 10 years old. When we bought the house, we knew the location was excellent, but to be frank, right now, it's just a little bit too small, especially with our children being at home schooling. The space is pretty limited. Our goal since high school is to own our own home in San Marino, raise our family here. We are high school sweethearts. We went to Valentine, Huntington Middle School, and San Marino High School, college, graduate school together. So we're definitely high school sweethearts. We want our children to grow up here. We do want to retire in this house. San Marino means everything to us. We really look forward to completing this project, and we're actually ready to move on. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Okay, so are there any questions from the commissioners for the applicants or the architect? Yes, go ahead, Vice Chair Boyle.
I don't want to steal your thunder, Chair Dustin, but I am, the only light that I saw mentioned in any of the designs was the porch light fixture. And now you're saying that there are other wall-mounted fixtures in places. Can you tell me what those lights are and where they're going to be located?
Yes, it's actually on the sheet number, I'm sharing the screen right here, 8202, for example. Next to the French door on the back is actually right here, let me see, the light fixture, you know, number four right here. This is a light fixture on the back backyard. It is a light fixture, designer's fountain, Bay Porter Collection, is a dark sky light, the wall-mounted light right here, only for the backyard, not for the front.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions from any of the other commissioners?
I have a question on.
I'm sorry, I hear somebody talking, but I can't tell who it is.
Why?
There we go. Commissioner Ross, go ahead.
Maybe I bumped it. Anyway, I have a question about AO 02 on the.
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, Commissioner Ross. You're muted again. Monte, you're going to have to restate that. You were muted.
I can let it go. It was a superfluous question regarding a couple of objects I didn't understand on the drawing, but I think it's more important to go on with the meeting.
Given that, are there any other questions from any of the other commissioners? All right, then, hearing none, I'm going to ask if, I'm going to open the public hearing at this time, and ask if there's any members of the public who would like to comment for or against or about this project.
Chair, I do not see raised hands at this moment.
All right. Given that, I'm going to close the public hearing on this, on the public comment section on this item, and I will move us into deliberations and discussion. Commissioner Brody, your thoughts, please?
Yeah, I was fascinated with the history of this place. Richard Reardon, who was a member of the LA Council and mayor for about, I think it was eight years, a former attorney with Reardon and McKenzie, owned the place, but I think he sold it in the 70s. In any event, just a very interesting history leading up to where it is at present, and made for an interesting few minutes. Aside from that, the architect, I think, did a superlative job on this. I really have to compliment her. She's taken what seems to be a ubiquitous Cape Cod slash, I guess, post-World War II ranch, and turned it into something that is much nicer and much more attractive. And it fits perfectly with the neighborhood, and I have nothing but compliments about this, and I definitely could support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Chang?
Yes, I'm in agreement with the comments that Commissioner Brody made. I think the home is compatible with the neighborhood as designed. I think it would be an improvement for the overall neighborhood as well as the legal neighborhood, and I can support the project.
Thank you. And Commissioner Wright?
I agree with the two prior speakers, commissioners, and also want to compliment the architect. Anytime I'm ready to vote approval, the first time I see a project, I have to compliment the architect. It seems just so rare that an architect really gets what we're trying to do in San Marino, not overdo it. So I just think it really, it really goes well. I do want to politely correct Commissioner Brody, though, that Richard Reardon never acted as a council member. He did act as mayor, and you know I know that because I was there. I was working for the city.
I said corrected.
When he was our mayor, and I'm not going to comment on him as a mayor, if that gives you any sense. But as far as the project goes, I could support the staff report.
Thank you. Vice Chair Boyle?
Thank you. To start, I will humbly admit that the story polls had me very confused to just, I really had to take a second look. In general, I would say that I agree with all of the other commissioner comments. I think that this is compatible for the neighborhood as designed, and I don't have any concerns regarding the design. As usual, I'm going to make my standard comments that I think that it would benefit the project to have a little bit more shade coverage with regards to the canopy of the trees. And as, also per usual, I am not a fan of the amount of impervious coverage in the backyard. But other than that, I mean, it is what it is. I just want to put those comments on record that I would like to see a few more trees, or, you know, different trees to add some more shade, especially to offset how much impervious coverage is there. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Ross?
I was amazed at the architect's efforts to improve this piece of property, and it amazed me that the front elevation was exactly the same as what we see in the photograph on, of the present house. Other than that, I really do like it.
Thank you. And Director Cervantes, did Commissioner Okazaki submit any comments?
He did. Now, read them off. I like the project, and I support it.
Thank you. Sounds like we have fairly good consensus. I'll just make a couple of comments. The only concerns that I had, and they're very minor, but I would appreciate maybe some conditions to consider these or to include these. Looking at the shutter application, they looked a little random and incoherent. Some of the windows had shutters, some windows that were pretty much the same didn't have shutters. This also might be an artifact of the CAD program that was used, but on the elevations, the louvers on the shutters seem very thin and closely set. So I'm hoping that we're going to see at least like inch, inch and a half width on the louvers on the shutters. But since the manufacturer and model number of the shutters was not made available, I couldn't check that out to see what really was there. Also, window, the window on the front elevation just to the side of the entry door, I think it goes, looks into the bathroom on the inside. On the window schedule, it's window W04T. There are no divided lights on that window, and it does not match the rest of the windows on the house. And I think that it should have divided lights that match the remainder of the windows. The last comment that I had would be on the rear elevation, windows, there's two of them, both labeled W11 on the window schedule. They have very vertically elongated lights, which are not consistent with the lights on the rest of the windows of the house, which are all square or nearly square divided lights. And it would be nice if there was consistency in that. And then I also would share Vice Chair Boyle's comments. I thought they did a great job with this, but I would have liked to have seen species of trees selected that at maturity would be slightly larger and offer a greater shade canopy, but I'm not going to hang my hat on any of that at this point. I did feel an obligation to make some comments complimenting this architecture or the architect on this project because I think it did really hit to home so many of our concerns that we struggle with on other projects. And so very quickly, this house is going from the smallest house in the legal neighborhood to being the largest house in the legal neighborhood. Normally, that would alarm me, but because they are, that's a big ask, they are very considerate in what they're asking for for the rest of the house. They didn't try to go for a second story. They have very modest plate heights. They're not trying to go from eight foot to 10 foot. They're not requesting all en suite bathrooms for every bedroom. These are things that allowed them to contain the size of the house so that it didn't become overwhelming. The entry porch is inset. It's not flush with the front facade. The roof is fully. The roof is fully hip. They didn't go with a gabled roof on the end to get a little more square footage, or to push the ceiling height up. The lighting is dark skies compliant. There are substantial tree plantings in the landscaping. I just am not a fan of the size of the trees that they selected. So I did really want to compliment the architect on getting so many of those things right. So with those comments, do we have a motion?
I move to, oh, am I on mute? Okay. I'm going to approve DRC 19-88 HP. Did you want to add conditions? Sorry, John.
The only thing I really think is an issue is that window W 04 in the front, that it should have divided lights.
With the condition that window W 04 have have divided lights.
Through divided lights.
Correct. Is there a second? Thank you. We have a motion by Vice Chair Boyle, and a second by Commissioner Brody. Can we have roll call, please?
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boyle?
Yes.
And Chair Dustin?
Yes. And with that, I would like to say thank you and congratulations to the applicant and the architecture. It was, our architect, it was a pleasure to review this project.
Thank you so much. Thank you all.
Thank you.
With that, we will move to our next agenda item, agenda item number five. An ordinance of the City of San Marino amending the city code related to off-street parking requirements for small restaurants. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair, members of the planning commission. This is an attempt of our economic development strategy to help remove barriers with respect to the attracting of businesses in the city. This attempt here is a very small attempt, but although very large in our minds, as it has the potential of attracting several new restaurant uses into the city. We have defined that of a small restaurant in terms of its size of the restaurant as to not lead into a situation where we sort of open it up for everyone to take advantage of this. We thought very strongly and thoroughly as to how to make this work for the city with the existing constraints of, of course, parking in the city, both Huntington Drive and Mission. So the goal here is to, of course, allow for what we define as a small restaurant in terms of its size, the ability to, to be approved by the city to come in with very specific parking requirements that, parking requirements that are equal to that of a retail shop or retail store, as well as equal to that of a office use. With that said, we're looking to not only establish that definition of a small restaurant, but also tie in the parking ratio of one space for every 250 square feet of floor area. Included in that is a restriction on the customer accessible space, which is the seating area, not to exceed 25% of the square footage of the unit. That is a mechanism in place to help alleviate or mitigate some of the concerns with respect to parking and for circulation of vehicles around the business. And so with that said, I open for question. Of course, the recommendation from staff is to review and provide feedback of the proposed draft ordinance, amend and provide comments to the ordinance, and direct staff to present the proposed draft ordinance to the city council for final adoption. And so I open for questions.
Are there any questions for staff?
And if I may, it just, I wanted to elaborate further on the square footage that we had defined in the ordinance. The square footage that we fell upon with respect to what we felt comfortable with initially started at 2,000 square feet, and quickly was reduced down to the number that you see in the ordinance for the definition. At 1,500 square feet seems to be the, the common desire of small restaurants that have approached us to wanting to come into town, that they seek spaces that are likely no larger than about 1,200 to 1,500 square feet. So it makes sense that based off the market demand that is currently out there, we felt that we couldn't assert that information into the ordinance to, to bring it more into reality of what's out there at the moment. So, thank you.
I had a question. I was just curious, was the, the sort of driver behind this suggestion the Economic Development Council itself, or was it feedback from business owners? Or was it a combination of that? Or did city staff come up with the idea? How did it sort of get rolling?
Yeah, this got rolling specifically with the help of our economic development team, which one of them is, is here, of course, and she likes, she can certainly chime in on this one to help out. But the goal here, of course, as the economic development team started a year ago, we went ahead and started to discuss, so what kind of barriers are currently out there? And how can we remove those barriers, but also be very careful in removing those barriers? One of the discussions that was, that we had early on was restaurant uses and how to bring them in, and removing the barriers or obstacles. In the case here, the very restrictive parking requirements that are identified in the staff report, as well as the need for the CUP. Now, we're not eliminating those two requirements. Those will still be there for larger restaurants. For small restaurants, we want to provide some, some easier path. But to answer your question, Commissioner, Chair, this idea came from collaboration of staff, as well as the economic development team.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. Although, so per the way it's written, it's one space per 250, is that correct?
Correct.
So in the event that there's a restaurant that wants to open up at nine, like, let's say 999 square feet, is that four spaces or three that would be required?
At 900 square feet, it would be, they would need three spaces.
Three spaces. So once it hits 1,000, then it's the four?
No, 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 there isn't. So anything up to 100, anything up to 1,500 square feet would be under the 1 to 250 parking ratio. So, so of course, the square footage is going to result in a very specific parking requirement. As you mentioned, 900 square feet will result, just mathematically, to, to, to the three parking spaces. 1,500 square feet, which is the larger amount, you're looking at six parking spaces that are required. And just, that's just the math of it.
No, I understand. So you're not rounding up if it's edging towards that upper echelon?
The way that the code is drafted now, we don't round up. But if the commission would like to see a rounding up of that, we can certainly look at that.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Help me understand. So clearly, the parking requirements change for the restaurants who do not hit that threshold. Does the need for a conditional use permit also not kick in until they exceed that threshold?
Yes, so what we're trying to do here is, is define a small restaurant to then add very specific development standards to a small restaurant. And so that is the, of course, the seating arrangements, which is the 25% cap, as well as the parking ratio of 1 to 250. If you're not going to be within these parameters, you will fall under our traditional restaurant use, which would trigger the CUP. It would also trigger the more restrictive parking requirement. And so as I identify in the staff report, restaurant uses currently, if you, if you're a restaurant wanting to come into the city, and you wanted to occupy an existing building on Huntington Drive, we have, per code, waived the parking requirements, but have not waived the CUP requirements. A restaurant that wants to come into town, develop a brand-new building, whether on Huntington Drive or Mission, the parking is one space for every 45 square feet of customer accessible area. Any area outside of that, meaning the back kitchen, the counter space for the staff, is at a ratio of 1 to 250. And so as you can tell, a 1 to 45 ratio for parking is a very restrictive parking requirement that really most restaurants cannot meet.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions from the commission?
Question, John. In reading the ordinance on J 1, I'm sorry, J 2, it says if indoor seating exceeds 25% of the total gross floor area, the, of the business, the standard parking requirements for restaurants, doesn't say small or large, but I assume large, set forth in Section 231003. Well, right below it is Section 102303. Yes.
Yeah, so what, yeah, so what, what we've done is, it would make a lot more sense when you see the entire code organized, if this is adopted. So what we mentioned by J 2 is that if you're not, if you're, if you're outside of parameters of that of a small restaurant, then you will fall under the standards of a traditional restaurant, which I just mentioned, the parking requirements being 1 to 45, or 1 to 250.
It says restaurants have 20, 250 square feet per space.
No, so the existing code, as it is right now, without this code amendment, currently states that a restaurant has a parking requirement of 1 to 45 for the customer area, and 1 to 250 for non-customer areas. That is currently built into the table in the code. Underneath, if this is adopted, of course, in that table that you see currently in our code, you will see, under restaurants that is currently there now, a new definition of small restaurants, which will have these parameters built into it.
Okay, okay. As long as you're happy, I'm confused.
Well, maybe if I could say too, Commissioner Ross, as a point of clarification, restaurant is defined in the code. So when they mention restaurant there, it's, it's a specific definition that, that will apply versus small restaurant that is separately defined. I had that same question.
If there are no further questions, I'm going to open this up for public comment now. So if there are any members of the public who would like to comment for, or against, or about this item, if you could indicate your intent?
Chair, I am looking through the Zoom platform. I do not see any comments. I do want to read Commissioner Okazaki's comment before we close that.
Thank you.
And so he states, he asked a question, actually, and I can answer that question. Are we restricting to Huntington Drive restaurants, or is Mission Street restaurants included? And the answer to your question, James, or Commissioner Okazaki, is that this code will apply to both Huntington Drive and for Mission Street. And with that said, Chair, I do not see any other questions in the queue.
Thank you. All right, so with that, I'm gonna close public comment on this item, and we will move to discussion. Vice Chair Boyle, what are your thoughts on the Economic Development Committee?
Yeah, I was gonna say, as the aforementioned member of the economic development team, obviously, this is something that we have been discussing for a while. The purpose of the, of the team is to find ways that we can revitalize our commercial district and attract, obviously boutique restaurants that fit the, the nature and style of our community. So, again, we've been talking about this for a while. It has come before us for a few different meetings for review, and I feel very confident with what has come before planning commission, and I can support it wholeheartedly.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright?
Well, you know how much I love ordinances. I always say they're the most important thing that we do is review them, because they set forth the policy that everything flows in the city. I congratulate Vice Chair Boyle and staff, and thank you for all your hard work on this committee. I think just some of these ideas are gonna be really helpful to our community, and this is one of them. I don't know that it's perfect, because anytime you start reducing parking, you can have unintended consequences, but I, but especially like Commissioner Chang's point, yeah, you get, you get people who start saying, my, my restaurant's gonna be 999 square feet to try to take advantage, you know. People always find loopholes, trust me, I know. But it's, it's still, I think, a really good idea, and really worth recommending to council. I had some minor, I know you're shocked, but minor comments that I already presented to Director Cervantes, just some really more form things that I think would make it better. But the only one I would really mention, just because I think it's not clear, is when you talk about the J 2 that says if the indoor seating area exceeds 25%, et cetera, the standard parking requirements for restaurants are satisfied. I think that's confusing, and I think it should be more, you know, either shall be satisfied, or shall apply, or shall be required, or something, because are satisfied, I find confusing. So I do think that needs to be a little clearer, but, and then, like I said, I just said some minor, really, form comments. And other than that, I could really, wholeheartedly support it.
Thank you. Commissioner Chang?
Yes, I can support the ordinance. I think it's a positive effort to try to attract businesses. I think it was smart of the group and the, and, and and his team to refine that square footage from its initial 2,000 square feet down to 1,500. I think that it's gonna be much more applicable among the commercial spaces that are available in the city. And so I think it's a good, a good change, and it will be able to promote the businesses. We're looking to revitalize our commercial districts, so I'm in support of it. And I would also echo Commissioner Wright's comments regarding the secondary portion of the code, that it is not clear, it should be, that once the 25% is met, then exceeded, then the, the code section is in effect and not satisfied.
Thank you. Commissioner Brody?
Yeah, I think this is an improvement, and I think we desperately need some, some more commercial activity, and unfortunately, we don't have that. I would think that we would want to make any approval contingent, or have an addition to the approval, adopting what Commissioner Wright pointed out, that that comment are satisfied is vague, and using the mandatory shall language is much more appropriate. So I think that's an excellent point that you raised.
Thank you. Commissioner Ross?
John, I need to say. Did you all hear me?
Yes, thank you. And Director Cervantes, did Commissioner Okazaki submit his opinions on this?
Yeah, he states, I would like to suggest we get a report back to the commission in a year, and see if there are any unintended consequences, and may have to adjust the size of a small restaurant.
Thank you.
Problem with that is probably with that is when someone, someone's trying to come into, you know, and establish a business, and they think they got a one-year drop dead date, they'll look elsewhere.
No, I think it would have to apply to future, it would be like, maybe it's, it's time to amend it for future applications. I agree, it could not, I don't think it could apply to, and they, they would have a vested right, so I don't think it's worried about.
I think that was the intent of his suggestion, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll just say I share most of the comments that have already been made. I was, it was really an eye-opener to me to see what the parking requirements are for restaurants. And I, it really shocked me. I wouldn't want to see that much parking available in town. We'd be like a used car lot. So, yeah, I'm not, I'm not opposed to this at all, and I think we can ask for a motion.
I move to recommend approval of this ordinance to the city council with the suggested change of language in AJ 2.
One second.
And can we have a roll call, or do we need a roll call? Yes?
No, we do need a roll call, yes. So that's Commissioner Brody. So that's Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boyle?
Yes.
Chair Dustin?
Yes. Okay, so with that, we're moving on now. We are now moving on to Agenda Item Number Six. This is a request for an appeal of a determination of a tree removal permit at 1160 Sierra Madre Boulevard. Staff report, please.
Yes, thank you, Chair, and members of the Planning Commission. This is an appeal of a tree application permit to remove trees on the property located at 1160 Sierra Madre Boulevard. Said trees were, in fact, approved by the urban forester as part of our protocol for reviewing these tree application permits. It is not an appeal of the decision to deny the request, but we have an appeal of the tree replacement as associated in our ordinance. In this case, there was the requirement of the urban forester as a condition of approval upon the removal of these trees to replace, or tree to replace said tree with four 36-inch box trees. And it was the allowance of the owner to appeal that request, which is why it's before you tonight. The owner of the property suggests that there is clearly not enough room on the property to plant four 36-inch box trees, not only for reasons of indicating that their property is already dense with lush landscaping, but additional trees in their sort of main scheme of their landscaping could certainly interfere with their overall landscaping plan and design. And so in looking at the property, both in aerial and visit, I can't agree with the property owner's suggestion that there is just not enough room to plant four 36-inch box trees. I do, though, suggest that the property owner, as a condition of approval upon this appeal, that they plant one 36-inch box tree on the property, as well as one 24-inch box tree as well. I think there's enough room in the front yard, not in the same location as the pine tree being removed, but of course, south of where that pine tree currently exists. And certainly, a 24-inch box tree can be planted somewhere in the backyard where there was some large lawn area. So with that said, staff recommends that the Planning Commission approve the appeal request with the following condition. The pine tree shall be replaced with one 36-inch box tree and one 24-inch box tree. And I open for questions.
And do any of the commissioners have questions for staff?
Actually, I guess I do. I just want to make, sorry, are we stipulating that it is a, that the replacement trees are heritage trees?
You can do one or two things. You can amend the condition to state that the trees are to be either a very specific species that you may have in mind, or just be brought and state oak tree or heritage tree, or you can certainly just identify an established tree of their choice to be planted.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions from the commission? I have a couple. So it wasn't clear to me, from looking at the property and looking at aerial views online, has the pine tree in question already been removed?
I, that's a question for the applicant. I have not seen whether that tree was removed. It may have been removed just for sake of dealing with the hazardous condition that the pine tree hasn't been identified under. They can certainly have that ability to remove that tree. It's obviously not an appeal with respect to a denial situation, so we don't have that. So the applicant may have removed it just out of precaution of the hazardous condition. All we're dealing with here is whether we want to replace that tree or not, and to one extent.
Yeah, no, I understand it was perfectly within their purview to remove. And I just, I'm trying to get a sense from what I looked at and the tree canopy that I saw, did that include an already removed tree, or was the tree still to be removed? So I'll get to that when I ask the applicant. My next question for staff is, do we know if the pine tree in question is a species that is classified as a heritage tree?
The only information that I received with, from the applicant, is that it's a pine tree. It's very, I didn't get the actual correct naming of the tree. I can certainly look that up as you have questions for the owner of the property.
Okay, and then my last is really more of a comment, but I was just wondering, you know, I looked online at the application for a tree removal form that's available on the city website, and there's a lot of really useful information on that. I was wondering if in the future, for cases such as this, would it be possible for a copy of the tree removal application to be included in the materials that are provided to us?
Yes, and we can certainly do that.
Great. Back to the other commissioners, are there any other questions for staff at this time? Okay, so with that, I will ask the applicant to please state their name and address, and please present their presentation.
Okay, my name is Liz KM. My property is 1160 Sierra Madre Boulevard, San Marino, California 91108. This is my primary residence. My husband and I and two kids have been living here since probably about nine years ago. And we have been very diligent in terms of keeping up with the landscape based on the original design, which was submitted, I think, by previous owner back in 2007. So during last round of the tree trimming process, the tree trimming company identified this pine tree that is quite sick. And we kind of noticed that because it just doesn't have new leaves coming out. So after all this evaluation, to the point that we really have to move as fast as possible because it's so close to the edge of the property that could easily either fall to the neighbor's house or fall down to Sierra Madre Boulevard. So, you know, I'm pleased that, you know, working with the city, that we get the permit going, and the tree, in fact, is already being removed. Also, I don't know exactly what day you have drove by and seeing, and which angle you're seeing, because the original design actually was two pine trees kind of side by side. So what you have seen from, you know, the driveway, you probably see the one that's still in very good shape, probably needs still a bit more trimming during winter time. It's kind of behind that, so you probably couldn't see it, you know? Right now, we kind of keep the hole still open, pending on the decision today. Then we can quickly just, you know, putting that 36-inch box tree replacement in as soon as possible. Talking to, you know, the landscaping company, we just saw that instead of the pine tree, by the way, I really do not know if that's a historical tree or not. That was not part of the question that being asked during the approval process. It's just a regular pine tree, but I can tell it's been there for a long time. So instead of having another pine tree, we're thinking about, you know, adding color and a texture to the landscape. We suggested the jacaranda tree, which we have two in the front. If you consider the back alley as the front, that kind of, you know, give a little more color. And also, it's preventing that, you know, a little bit too close to the other pine tree that might cause some problem in the future. So definitely, you know, we feel like the four replacements, 36-inch box, I just really having trouble finding place because we're really trying to follow the original design of the landscape. And right now, it's quite dense, as you know, many of you probably have mentioned or seen. So even with the 24-inch, another, just, you know, another one is 24-inch to plant this somewhere. I will, you know, if you could, could you help me to identify a place that I can put that 24-inch, that the second one? So that's the case that, you know, I'm presenting here, and I really appreciate your time and your consideration. And once again, you know, we really just want to keep the integrity and continue to do a good job, not, you know, putting or risking other trees by planting too many, or in any way affecting the irrigation system that we already designed. Thank you.
Thank you. Do any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant? The only questions I have, the applicant already answered, so. No questions? Okay, so at this time, I'd like to open this for public comment. If there are any members of the public who would like to comment for or against or about this appeal request, would you please indicate? I see one chat. Yes, it is a heritage tree. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that was, that was mine. I don't see any of their raised hands in the queue.
Just for the applicant's information, so heritage tree does not mean that it's historic or old. It just, it's a classification of a certain number. There are certain species of trees that are considered heritage trees because they are, they have a tradition and a familiarity in the community and in the city, so.
Okay, got it.
Yeah.
But does that mean, does that mean I cannot have the jacar-
I believe a jacaranda is also considered a heritage tree, so you would be okay with that.
Okay, got it. Thank you.
Going back to questions from commissioners, or I'm sorry, we already did that. Questions from the public? Any other comments from the public? I don't see any raised hands. Aldo, do we have any emails or anything?
I do not have any communication on this item.
Okay, then I'm going to close public comment on this item, and I will open deliberations and discussions amongst the commission. Commissioner Chang?
Yes, I support the recommendation of staff with the reduction of necessary trees we replanted, as stated in our report. I'd be in support of that reduction, and I think it's proper and appropriate, given the site and the property, the vegetation and lush landscaping that is there. I'm in support of that.
Thank you. Vice Chair Boyle?
Oh, me? Yeah, I, yes, I'm in complete support of staff's recommendation. I think that this is a very thoughtful homeowner that is trying to follow a specific landscape plan that supports all of the trees on their property. I think that a jacaranda would be a lovely replacement. And nothing further to say.
All right. Commissioner Brody?
Yeah, I can support it. I'll just echo what was said before.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright?
I agree, and just wonder if we should impose a condition that clarifies that they should be heritage trees.
I would agree, yeah.
Clarification, I could support the report, and I do agree that it's good to go along with that landscape plan that we previously approved.
Thank you. Director Cervantes, did Commissioner Okazaki submit any comments?
Yes, and I'll read, I support the homeowner's appeal.
Thank you. Commissioner Ross?
I think we're right in what they were trying to appeal to.
Thank you. Yeah, I agree with the consensus that's been expressed to the, so far, by pretty much everyone. I would like to see a condition that the two trees, that the conditions recommended by staff be included in the motion for the 136-inch box and 124, and that they both be heritage trees. That will give the homeowner flexibility, but they can also use the jacaranda that they're intending to. With that, do we have a motion?
I move to, what is it, grant the appeal related to 1160 Sierra Madre Boulevard with the condition that there be a 36-inch tree and a 24-inch tree, both heritage trees.
I'll second it.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boyle?
Yes.
Chair Dustin?
Yes. Okay, that moves us on to Agenda Item Number Seven. This is a similar appeal of a determination of a tree removal permit at 747 Winston Avenue. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair, members of the Planning Commission. A similar case as the prior, which is an appeal regards to the denial of one tree to be removed, as well as, actually, no, this is not an appeal with respect to the conditions. It's just an appeal with respect to an oak tree that is adjacent to an existing shared property line, as well as adjacent to a shared block wall. One of the trees, an oak tree, both being oak trees, one of them was approved by the urban forester for removal upon finding that the tree has been severely in decline or is indeed dead. The other oak tree is, as I mentioned, on the south side yard area, adjacent to the property line of this homeowner, as well as adjacent to the opposite side homeowner, who's at 761 Winston Avenue. Both the owners and neighbor are here present and would likely like to speak on this matter. Staff essentially did not have enough information to make the decision on this specific oak tree, and I'll be very specific to this. In looking at the oak tree that's adjacent to this block wall, and speaking to our urban forester, it is not likely for oak trees to generate this level of impact on structures like this. As I mentioned in the report, only the buttress or the base of an oak tree, which is intended to expand, of course, as any tree would, could ultimately cause a sort of a vertical impact to the tree rather than the uplifting that's currently occurring with that adjacent wall. It's very uncharacteristic for a oak tree like this to cause that level of damage to any structure, in this case, a wall. And so with the lack of real information with respect to that of a certified arborist, not our city arborist, but a certified arborist hired by the applicant to demonstrate that indeed it is this oak tree causing this damage. Right now, I don't have the information that could definitively say that this oak tree is causing the damage to this block wall. And so with that said, for the lack of information to help with the decision of this matter, staff recommends the Planning Commission continue this item to October 28, 2020, so that the applicant or the appellant can provide the city with the proper documentation to report on said wall. And open for questions.
Are there any questions from the commissioners for staff?
I'm one of the applicants, so may I speak?
In a moment, we'll open it for public comment, yes.
Okay, thank you.
If there are no questions from the other commissioners, I have a couple. Let me find my file here, sorry. Oh, yes, so I was curious to know, I understand that the oak tree, there were two oak trees requested for removal in the original application, one in the front yard, which has already been removed, from my understanding. Do we know anything about what type of tree replacement was agreed upon with the resident regarding the removal of the oak in the front yard?
Yeah, that is, the conditions upon the application to remove that one oak tree in the front yard was to replace it with four 36-inch box heritage trees.
Okay, and not specifically an oak?
Well, in this case, the old heritage trees would have been the oak trees in that case. I mean, it is a condition to replace it with the heritage tree, but in this case, it was likely that the urban forester recommended oak trees. I don't have the application in front of me, so I could not speak to that, but the policy, as well as the ordinance, requires a like-for-like replacement.
Okay, yeah. Would it be, again, I'm not going to presume that we're going to continue it, but if we did, could we have that information for any future on this matter?
Yes.
Great. Are there any other questions? Are there any other questions from the commission for staff at this time? All right, and then, so now, if the homeowners of seven four seven Winston, if they're available and they would like to make a statement, could they please do so?
This is Andrew Yeb. I'm with my wife Julia. We own this home at seven four seven Winston Avenue since nineteen eighty-eight. Very proud owner of this house. And thank you for director order for the new information, which I have not known before. The reason that I have disappeared is because of my neighbor. Actually, we're very proud and lucky to have such a neighbor, you know, south side, Mr. Frank Teresi. Mr. Teresi brought to my attention that my oak tree, seems like my oak tree has lifted his driveway and also the gate and also the share wall. So being a good neighbor, I want to take this to, to the commission and see if I can either remove the tree or somehow make the condition a little bit better, because it is a hazard to my neighbor. So I know Mr. Teresi is with us, so if it's okay, I'll have him to present his side.
And just a moment, we'll, we'll ask for public comment. I'm going to just first ask if any of the commissioners have questions for the applicant. No, I don't see any. So, and so now we'll open for public comment. And Mr. Teresi, now you are more than welcome to speak.
Okay, I am not grandma. My wife's cell phone I'm using, so I, believe me, I'm not grandma, I'm grandpa. The Yeps are very close neighbors for us. And that wall, we sent you pictures, and I think, Al, you have pictures of what we have back there. That's a year old. My wall now is another three digits higher in the middle. My one gate won't close, my driveway is splitting. Now, I talked to one tree service and I said, what if they go in and sever the roots by the side of the wall? So that wouldn't happen. And he said, the first thing that's going to happen, that tree's going to fall over. So I don't want the liability, and they certainly, Yips, don't want the liability of a tree falling onto my property or their property. And I don't know what else to do. I can't close half my gate. Now, if I repair the gate and the tree keeps growing, my wall is going to keep growing. And pretty soon, my wall is already splitting. So now does that mean my wall is going to crumble? So we have a, we love San Marino, we've been here for fifty years. I want all the trees, but there's damage. And if something happens where someone has liability and someone is hurt, now we got a different problem. So all they want to do is remove that tree and hopefully the wall settles down. Like to repair my driveway. It's as simple as that.
Thank you very much for your comments. Are there any other members of the public who would like to chime in on this topic? I don't see anything.
You know, one question like, I'd like to ask, who is liable for something like this? The Yips petition the city, I'm agreeing with them. If something would happen, who is liable, San Marino, for refusing it?
That is, that is a question for your legal attorneys, your, to provide you with advice as to, as to who's liable on this tree. I would say that from an experience perspective, the tree is not on city property. The tree is on private property. And if it were to fail in some respect, whether it's through failure of the limbs, failure of the tree altogether, that is not the liability of the city, even knowing of this application. Right now, it's not a matter of whether we want to accept the application or not. It's a matter of not having all the information to make a proper decision here. Once we have that information, we can make a better decision as to what can be done about the tree. Now, I have seen in the past similar conditions where the tree has been saved and the wall or the structure nearby has been replaced. And the wall that's been replaced in those circumstances, there are mitigation measures taken into account to bridge over any of the root systems of that tree to prevent lifting or further lifting or damage of that new wall. And so there are mitigation measures that can be taken to save the tree and work around the structural deficiencies of the, of course, the driveway approach and the block wall. But on the liability question, I would certainly speak to your attorneys to figure out where you stand on that.
Yeah, I'm not talking to any attorneys on this. I just know across the street at the Crowley Restaurants, seven fifty Winston, they had a sixty-foot tree. And their driveway, driveway was experiencing these cracks. Two weeks ago, that tree was removed, the driveway's been repaired. There was no wall structure, there was no, just the driveway, there was no gate structure. So I'm looking at it from a different perspective. I do have major damage happening to the wall and the driveway and the gates.
All right, so do we have any other public comment? Any emails that were submitted?
Not this time, Chair.
Okay, so at this time, I'm going to close the public comment section on this item and we'll go into discussion. Comments on the recommendations of staff to continue this. Commissioner Brody?
Yeah, I agree with the staff's conclusion on this thing, that we ought to continue it to October twenty-eighth. Although frankly, that uplifting and the effect on the block wall, I don't know what else could cause that. But we need some clarification and we need some alternatives, some options. So this is probably the best way to go.
Thank you. Commissioner Chang?
Yeah, I agree. I think a continuance is called for to the late, the next meeting for the very same reasons that, I think, a professional opinion of an arborist to see whether or not that tree can be saved at their mitigating circumstances to, to save the tree or keep it in place and repair the wall. And then the homeowner at that time and the neighbor will have an ability to assess what best direction once they have that professional opinion and present it to us.
Thank you. Commissioner Wright?
I agree with Commissioners Brody and Chang. I'm very sympathetic to the appellants and their neighbor. I can tell it's very frustrating. So my hope is that with this continuance and with this additional information, you will be even better off with, with perhaps mitigation measures and ways to, to be even, to be very confident that we're going in the right direction.
Commissioner Ross?
Are you muted, Commissioner Ross?
He's not muted, but I can't.
Because I can't hear him. I've got old ears, apparently.
Anyway, I'm with the others on the continuance.
It sounded to me like he said he's for the continuance. So, and do we have a comment from Commissioner Okazaki, Director Cervantes?
Yes, I support what Commissioner Okazaki states. I support the item being continued as recommended by staff. The oak tree is very, is very healthy and a great specimen. I would like to see that we can save the tree somehow.
Thank you. So I concur with my colleagues. I think continuance is an appropriate action to take. Do I have a motion?
Well.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was not asked upon, asked, called.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, please give your comment.
But I, you know, it's, it's going to be like, it's not exciting. I concur with everybody else who said. I'm very sympathetic for the appellant and the neighbors. And I, and I agree that I hope that giving the time to have an arborist report will, will resolve this in the best interest of all those involved.
Thank you. Since I neglected to include you in the, in the round robin, would you like to make the motion?
Oh, no. Hold on, I have to find it again. Oh, so I guess the, I move to continue the appeal of the tree application permit at seven four seven Winston Avenue.
And do we have a second?
I'll second it to October twenty-eighth meeting.
Can we have a roll call?
Yes. Commissioner Brody?
Yes.
Commissioner Chang?
Yes.
Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boyle?
Yes.
Chair Dustin?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, so now we move on to a whole slew of resolutions. I'm trying to figure out a, maybe an express way we could go through these. I know there were a lot of suggestions from Commissioner Wright on amendments. And I, I have to confess, I did not get those in time to identify the specific changes requested. So I was wondering if there's a way we could get that presented.
I think the way to deal with it is that the items that were emailed to us include the amendments. They were all minor. And it's, I could go through and tell you what they were, but honestly, they were, they were clarifications, typos, things like that. So I could go quickly and make motions if you want. And just let me tell you that I take this very seriously when I read these things, because I'm signing them.
No, I appreciate it.
But I could move for approval of the.
Well, actually, I have a quick procedural, well, I had one and I just lost it. Oh, I know what the procedural question was. For Director Cervantes, we don't need to do public comment on these resolutions, correct? Then, Chair, Commissioner Wright, if you would please maybe take us through an express motion on each of these.
I could start with, I'll move approval of resolution related to DRC twenty dash oh five at twelve fifteen St. Albans.
And do we have a second?
Second.
We can just go, all in favor?
Yeah, we have, we.
I think since we're doing remote, we have to do it.
You've got two members who are not present.
Yeah, the rule of.
Abstaining for that reason.
So we can't do it, Chair?
Now, the rule of this COVID era and public hearings is we have to do roll calls for everything, so.
That's fine.
You told me, I apologize.
One thing that we could do is we can do a false sweep of all of them, eight through, eight to thirteen, to make a motion.
That sounds like a wonderful idea.
All right, then, before we do that, I know you're, I apologize for this. But as to item number fourteen, which is the meeting minutes for July twenty-ninth and August twenty-sixth, I, I'm confused because the August twenty-sixth minutes give our vote on the Cumberland Road property and it's different than our vote in the resolution.
Then I would, I go ahead and just pull that one and we'll bring it back.
So I think, I think we should pull the August twenty-sixth, twenty-two, because I think that's the one that's wrong. The minutes to, to look at that. But otherwise, I would move for approval of resolution related to twelve fifteen St. Albans, resolution related to twenty-four sixty Cumberland Road, resolution related to eight thirty-five Huntington Drive, resolution related to thirteen fifteen South San Gabe Boulevard, resolution related to eight eighty Oxford Road, resolution related to seven sixty-five Canterbury Road, and the meeting minutes for July twenty-ninth, twenty twenty.
Excluding the meeting minutes?
No, no, I'm excluding the meeting minutes for August twenty-sixth.
Oh, I see.
Asking for approval of the meeting minutes for July twenty-ninth.
Thank you. Yeah, do we have a second on that mass motion?
I will second that.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Commissioner Brody?
I'll abstain, as I was not a planning commissioner during the, the hearings on these matters.
Commissioner Wright, do you have a comment?
Well, I, I just, I had that same issue when I first started, so I did do a little research. And I think, just for future reference, you're certainly welcome to abstain. But everything that I read said, if people abstained when they became new members, then nothing would ever get approved. And so it is, it is okay to, to, to act on things that you actually weren't. It didn't make sense to me either, and I certainly welcome you to do, do that research and correct me. But that was, that was the research that I did, although it was a while ago. So I just, I just throw that out there.
If you weren't going to have three votes to carry the day, Jerry, I, I may go ahead and go your way.
I'm fine with it. I'm just, I'm just, just presenting that for whatever you wanted with it.
Yeah, and then the other thing is one of the matters here, I see, and I'm not exactly thrilled with. So I, I'm going to stand with my abstain.
But as Director Cervantes has told me, we're not, we're not acting on the matter anymore. It's just the resolution of what happened. Because some of these, I'm the minority in too.
So we, we want to keep Commissioner Brody comfortable. Director Cervantes, which of our two alternates would be next up to vote?
Either one, whoever raises their hand first.
So we have a motion, we have a second.
Yeah, let me just, I'll just, for the sake of getting the meeting through, I will just nominate, I guess, Monty, since James is having some technical difficulties on that. But, so let me just go through the roll call. Commissioner Brody, I got your abstaining on that. Commissioner Chang?
Yeah, I'll abstain as well.
Abstain, okay. Commissioner Wright?
Yes.
Vice Chair Boyle?
Yes.
Chair Dustin?
Yes.
And alternate member Ross? I think I read, I read his lips and he said yes, I think.
Does Commissioner Okazaki need to replace Commissioner Chang, or do we just need the three?
Oh, yeah, I can, I can actually, we only need three, but I'll have James. And James says yes on that as well. Motion carries.
All right, I think that is the end of our agenda. Nine twenty-four, not bad. Thank you, everyone. I really appreciate it and.
Great job, Chair.
Good job.
Well, we'll see everyone back next month.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Stay safe.
Oh, and just before everyone logs off, the, the planning commission meeting in November is a Tuesday. We moved it to Tuesday in light of the, the holiday coming up. And so it is the same week as normal, the fourth week of the month, but on a Tuesday. So just to let you aware of that.
And we're still not meeting in December, correct?
That's correct, right.
Are we, do you think that by next month, we might be able to meet in person, the way the city council is? Do you think we have the feasibility of social distance in-person meetings?
I doubt it, unfortunately. I doubt it, yeah.
Okay.
It's not my call, believe me, but.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
So long, folks.
Bye.
So long.